Plunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Here.
All right, thank you Peggy. And now I'll entertain a motion for approval of the amendment of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Are there a motion in a second? Are there questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now I'll entertain motions on approval of the minutes from the January fourteenth first, and then the January thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
Move approval of the minutes of January fourteen, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Move approval of the minutes of January thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Trustee Rios. All right, and now we are at audience to patrons and petitioners in the agenda. Do we have any members of the audience that would wish to address the board today? If so, please step to the podium to my left. All right, seeing none, then we'll move to, uh...
Looking for a motion?
Uh, yeah, I guess so, because I'm looking at something different than you all are looking at. So, go ahead JD.
Oh. Uh, move it...
Hold on, before you do that, let's, uh, let's recognize the students that we have here first. That's why I'm looking at, it's so funny that you note here, Dr. Givens, because I don't have that on my agenda, so... All right, so could you hold that just for a second JD?
Yeah.
Okay, Dr. Givens?
On Thursday, February the thirteenth, Stacy Tucker and Phi Theta Kappa students, Ryan Proctor and Gabriella Acosta, visited with legislators. And they are here today to share with the board. And you have the program in front of you. It has the purple on it.
Mm-hmm.
From that session.
Stacy?
Good afternoon. We will not take very much of your time today. Um, today I have this year's All Kansas Academic Team nominees with me. There were fifty-two students that were named to the All Kansas Academic Team across the state of Kansas. And the students are given this honor based on their academic achievement, leadership ability, and community service. The program recognized, um, the sponsors for the event is Phi Theta Kappa International Headquarters, the Kansas Association for Community College Trustees, and the college presidents across the state. Today I have Ryan Proctor and Gabriella Acosta with me.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Ryan Proctor. I am majoring in civil engineering. I plan on graduating in May and going to Kansas University.
My name's Gabriella Acosta. I am a pre-med major, and I will be graduating in May as well. I plan on attending Washburn University.
As the All Kansas nominees for Kansas City Kansas Community College, we had the opportunity to attend the All Kansas Luncheon last Thursday in Topeka, Kansas.
Before the luncheon, we visited the Capitol and had the chance to meet with state representatives, including Stan Frandfelter and Valdenia Nguyen.
We also met with state representatives Broderick Henderson and received these certificates from Willie Duff.
This year, Brian was one of the ten students selected for the presentation that took place on the state house floor prior to the luncheon.
We would like to thank the following individuals for joining us in Topeka. Trustee Ash, Dr. Givens, and Dr. Vitale.
Dr. Kramer, Dr. McDowell, and Dr. Long. And here are a few pictures, uh, taken in Topeka.
Well, it's a wonderful event that, uh, KACC is proud to host each year. And we're so proud of the two of you, uh, for making the All Academic Team. And what an exciting day I know that you had at the Capitol, uh, as we visited at lunchtime. And, uh, you know, meeting with the representatives, being recognized on the house floor. Uh, it was a really big day. And it's a very, very important day for community colleges in Topeka as well, because it gives the legislators an opportunity to see firsthand for themselves the work that's being done in community colleges. And to get to know real people and hear real personal stories about the difference that community colleges are making, uh, in their lives and will continue to make in their lives as they, as they go forward. So, congratulations on your recognition. And it was a delight and a pleasure to share, uh, half of the day with you up there. And, uh, we wish you well in your endeavors moving forward. Let's give them a nice round. Trustees, who wish to address the students or ask questions?
I just would like to have a closer look at the certificate.
Oh, okay, would you hand, uh, maybe Ryan hand it there and, yeah, we'll send it down. And maybe Gabriella, you could start yours over here. Okay, um, Stacy, is there anything else you'd care to, to add regarding your Phi Theta Kappa charges?
I don't think so. I'd just like to thank all of you for attending. I know you all have busy schedules. Um, the students, Ryan doesn't know this yet, but your scholarship checks did come today. Peggy brought them down. So, thank you to Dr. Givens for getting those to us.
All right, outstanding. Okay, uh, any other board members? All right, well, once again, congratulations and thank you for representing our, our college so, so well. And as well as representing yourselves and your families. I know they're extremely proud of you. Thank you.
No, I didn't. They didn't talk about it.
Okay. Now JD, I think we're ready for that motion.
We're ready. I move that, uh, we, uh, recess into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed. And also to discuss confidential financial data or trade secrets of a business to protect the interests of the business to be discussed for a period of...
I would recommend for the second one, fifteen minutes, Trustee Rios. And I would also ask that it be under the attorney-client relationship to protect communications which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. And you would invite, uh, Mr. Warner and his son in on that one. And my suggestion is you take that matter up first in the fifteen minutes.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, the motion carries. We will temporarily adjourn here and rejoin you in fifteen minutes. Okay.
Motion to come back into session, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we call the meeting back into, uh, open session. And we are at, uh, item seven on the agenda, communications.
There is, um, in your board packet, the Saturday Science, Math, and Technology Academy is having the Parent-Family Breakfast and Demonstration Day on February twenty-second. So I wanted the board to be aware of that and possibly attend. It's always a, a great event.
Okay.
So that's the only communication.
And I see here we have a resolution regarding consumption of alcoholic liquor. March thirteenth is the first one up. At the Jewel Center. Trustees, do you see that?
Yes.
Do you have that?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we can discuss, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution regarding consumption of alco- uh, alcohol- alcoholic on March thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, in the Jewel Center. And then I'd like to have detail about this.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Okay, now, uh, questions or discussion? JD, you have...
Yeah, I'll go just some background on this.
Cheryl Lee?
Thank you, Trustee.
All right, you got it.
Maybe if my career in administration doesn't work out, I can get done with the ladies' basketball table. Be that as it may, this is a pattern, an event that has been going on for some time with John Stafford started as a, uh, as a fundraiser for the, uh, for the vocal jazz ensemble, the cabaret. And, uh, this year, based on the success of the Night in Heights, uh, last fall, he'd like to expand it, the potential of it, to, uh, include the sale of, of, uh, alcoholic beverages to attract a, a bigger audience and support some of the travel that the students are doing. And he's been working, uh, with Ms. Barbara Clark Evans about, uh, control measures, and she'll be glad to explain them to you.
Okay.
Hi. Um, for those of you who came to a night in the heights, it's pretty much the same type of setup. The, um, alcohol cost will be included in the cost of the ticket. Uh, we're trying to make the event a little more upscale to attract a, a higher ticket price. As, uh, Dr. Walker just said, the money's used for, um, the travel money for the students who are going to competition in New York City. So, um, John wanted to change it. The event's been going on for several years, and it's pretty much been the same type of event. So he's wanting to change the event as we go on so that it can be something ongoing. It can be new and different. We can have a higher price point as we move forward and continue to fund student activities.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Nguyen, do we need to read the resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. You probably don't need to read the second one, because this is in accordance with the normal standards and procedures and resolutions you've passed in the past. Am I correct?
Yes.
Read the first resolution, and then you can take the second action regarding the second activity without reading it, if it's your pleasure.
Excuse me. Do we have a copy of the resolution?
I don't know. I had one at my place. Did you all have one at your place?
Hmm, not of the resolution.
I think it definitely has to be read, and if we don't have a copy of it...
I agree.
Okay. This is a resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA forty-one dash seven nineteen I. Whereas Kansas statutes annotated forty-one dash seven nineteen C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on the public property except where expressly permitted by law. And whereas the Kansas City Kansas Community College is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provisions of KSA forty-one dash seven nineteen C specified property, which is under the control of the KCKCC Board of Trustees and which is not used for classroom instruction. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of KCKCC, Section One. KCKCC hereby exempts for Thursday February twenty-seventh?
March thirteenth.
All right, March thir- Thursday, March thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Um, the banquet areas of the Jewel Center from the requirement of KSA forty-one dash seven nineteen C. In Section Two, the exemption is granted in connection with the holding of the dinner and performance event, Cabaret, Laissez Le Bon Temps Roulere. That was passed and approved, I had a French one somewhere along the way. Passed and approved by the Board of KCKCC in a special meeting held on October thirteenth.
Move approval of the resolution.
I think we had him. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Well, we have a second resolution. I move approval of a resolution regarding consumption of, uh, alcoholic liquor at the Kansas City Kansas Community College Meet and Greet Event, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at the Thomas R. Burke Education Center Lobby.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll move.
No, we have one. I need a second.
Second.
And a second, all right? Other questions concerning this resolution, and I have the resolution to read.
Yeah, we don't have that copy either, so I guess if we don't read it, I just ask, is the language the same, except the change of the, uh...
Uh, I have, you'll have to read it, Mr. Chairman. Therefore, part of it, please, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Uh, the, the opening language is the same. Now therefore it be resolved by the Board of KCKCC, Section One. KCKCC hereby exempts for April twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, the lobby area of the Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center, located at sixty-five sixty-five State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, from the requirements of KSA forty-one dash seven nineteen. Section Two, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of KCKCC Meet and Greet Event. This event was passed and approved by the Board of KCKCC in a meeting held on February the eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. There are no further questions?
I missed, I missed something. Something, I didn't, what's going on down there?
It's a meet and greet event, uh, again, I believe hosted by the Endowment Association. Yes. Yes, the, and, and once again, as, as Counsel Nguyen pointed out, the opening language was the same. We are exempting, uh, the prohibition of the consumption of alcoholic liquor on the public property. So it's the same, that part's all the same, all right? We just changed the venue and the date.
I'm ready for it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Move approval of a resolution regarding the consumption of, uh, alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA forty-one dash seven one nine, uh... For the, uh, Kansas City Chapter of the National Tool and Machining, uh, Association Monthly Meeting taking place at the Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Once again, trustees, the opening language is the same. We are exempting the prohibition of consumption of alcoholic liquor on the property here. And then we continue. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of KCKCC, Section One. KCKCC hereby exempts for Thursday, February twenty-seven, two thousand and fourteen, the multipurpose room of the Technical Education Center from the requirements of KSA forty-one dash seven nineteen. Section Two, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of the Kansas City Chapter of the National Tool and Machining Association Monthly Meeting, which was passed and approved by the Board of KCKCC in a meeting held on February the eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think it's a clean sweep. Thank you very much. All right, President Givens, uh, item, agenda item number eight, your report.
Mr. Chair, the first president's newsletter went out on February twenty-eighth. And a big thank you to Kelly Rodge and Lisa Klein, who assisted me with the formatting of the newsletter. We have the Donuts with Dunn and Doris on January twenty-third. Melinda Kimmel, Mary Wishall, Louis Hall, Robert Beach, and Melinda Knight attended. We had several Martin Luther King, uh, events throughout KCK. And faculty, staff, administrators, Board of Trustees members, uh, attended those. Following lunch with the Phi Beta, uh, Phi Theta Kappa students, there was a separate, uh, COP meeting, COP meeting Council of Presidents. We had many interesting thoughts and concerns about, uh, what's going on in the legislature. And, um, uh, one very interesting thing for those of you who might be interested in moving forward toward a college presidency. At the COP, we discussed establishing a fourteen-to-eighteen month training for administrators who are interested in pursuing a community college presidency. And that would begin the first class in January twen- in July, two thousand and fourteen. So that's this summer. The fast-moving legislature has caused us to have a special meeting of the COP on, um, Monday from eleven to two. So I'll be traveling to, uh, Butler College for that special meeting to respond to issues that the legislature wants specifically answered by community colleges. The final copy of, the final draft of the KCKCC organizational chart is at your places for you to peruse. And the chart appeared in the president's newsletter, uh, when it went out. You will also notice that, uh, people are wearing name badges. And that is, um, uh, as of the first of February, um, that is something new that's implemented at the college, that all employees wear their name badges. And, uh, Board of Trustees, uh, may receive theirs if they go to the police station. They are well-prepared to make name badges, ID badges for you too. That's my report.
Yes, trustees, I encourage all of us to stop by the campus police office and process so that we too can, uh, be in compliance with that, uh, policy. It's everyone's job to help us all be safe. And so we can do that by properly wearing our identification, so... I encourage you, may, can we get that done after the meeting? Will there be somebody there? Okay, all right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Under, uh, president's report, is it, uh, time to ask questions on, uh, either the campus police or college relations that are reporting to the president now?
Sure.
Is that all right, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, under, uh, college relations, I, I was wondering if we could have a sample of the Phase One Direct Mail and Video Promotion? Is that kind of, you know, shown here, or? Or maybe it needs to be at a later time, I don't know.
Yes, he came and he said that he would like to do it later instead of today.
Okay.
So we will do that later.
Okay. And then, uh...
But if you have questions you want to ask, Jim Beachwood is still here? He's here?
Well, I would need to see the material, I don't know if I had any questions. Okay. Sure, sure, I'm just going off the report, yeah. Okay, that, no, that's fine.
Good, thank you, Jim.
As far as I'm concerned. Uh, the other, uh, said, uh, and I, I meant to bring this up in the past. You often mention, uh, you, how many press releases that you do in a given month. And I'm, I'm really actually more interested in the topics of those releases than the number of the releases. Would it be too cumbersome to, not, I don't want the releases themselves, but the topics so that we are cognizant of what is being distributed?
We will do that.
Would that be all right?
Starting next month.
Okay.
Yes.
Those are my only, uh, questions.
Okay, other trustees, questions for Dr. Givens?
Yeah, I have a question about the, uh, RFQ for Preliminary Assessment of Marketing and Advertising Agencies. Is that something that, that we put out an RFQ to receive some bids for marketing?
Yes. You haven't done that either yet, right?
That's, that's actually going out this week after the RFQ, which is a tiny process. Just, uh, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to actually mention this is a bet out to agencies that also are, that are, you may, you may, you may, you may, you may, you may respond. Agencies, and we'll accept those, and we will accept them next month. And, uh, one of the, uh, considerations, uh, for this is to have a public forum, and, 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 and,[1166.64]
Possibly getting the coaches on contracts. We're looking at how we can, just a little bit more accountability than what we have right now. I think that'll help getting them on contracts. Basically, the five things I've been talking to them about with the coaches are the academic success and the improvements, the athletic success, team discipline, the community service, and obviously, you know, keeping proper oversight of the budget as well. So those are really the five things I'm going to be focusing on with them. And we're meeting bi-weekly, just to kind of keep and make sure we're having constant communications, one-on-one, and keeping them updated with their budgets and everything like that. So hopefully, by the, we should have that in a couple of months. I'm going to be working with Cheryl on that as well and trying to get that done.
Are you working with Cheryl and our attorney?
I don't know how it works, but I think I've been told to work with Cheryl first. I think she'll work with our attorney on that. And that works with them yet directly. So I'm sure everything will get, if it's not approved, then we'll fix it. Expanding our advertising, that's some, one of the future projects I'm going to continue to work on. We have a new athletic website. It's bluedevils.kckcc.edu. We are ninety-nine point nine-nine percent done. There's just a couple of glitches that we're trying to get done with that. But Valerie Stbersky's done a great job with getting all the information on that. We work with Prestle Sports, that kind of hosts the website. And Dr. Baz and Lisa Klein and the Information Services, kind of, we all kind of worked together on that. And if you haven't seen it, it's really top-notch. And I think there's some opportunities for advertising on that as well. On the signage, we'll have, we'll have some signs out on the baseball field. We've added some in the gym already. I think so far, we've just having kind of like a collaborative effort, trying not to compete with Patrick here. We're letting him know what we're, who we're contacting and all that stuff. So, but we raised over $10,000 just simply on signage already this year. So that's been very helpful. Lastly, is just, you know, facility expansions. Obviously, I want to thank you for the support that you've given us so far with the baseball, and it's unbelievable, and the soccer and track and field. It's done nothing but change the perception and also give a first impression of, a great first impression of, on that side of the campus. And we kind of tallied it with our advertising. We get around seventy-five thousand people a year that visit our campus with our athletic facilities. So we get a lot of people that visit our campus. And, you know, first impressions are very important in recruiting, all of that. And so I just want to thank you again for that because we're definitely going to get our use out of it, and I think it's a, it's a great recruiting tool. I believe there's still some growth for facilities that I'm going to continue to work on, to see what we can do to meet our needs, our college's needs, as well as the community. And I think that's, I think there are, there are options out there for that. So just want to thank you for the time to give you an update. So, thanks.
Okay. Are there any other questions, specific questions?
I have one more. Tony, do you do any community service for churches? Or can you?
I think we can. I am meeting with a gentleman that, I don't know what organization he was, but he spoke at Westside Rigo Attend. He spoke in November, and he does a organization with student athletes and helps them, kids that are homeless, that are still athletes and stuff like that. Trying to get more information on that, but I, that's one thing I'm looking into right now. But if there's things that, that are needs out there, we definitely want to know about them because coaches are, like, we work at the Rock, around the McDonald House, our baseball team helped paint a complex for somebody that was in need, you know? So there are, there are things that we want to do. And if we know about them, we can definitely, we want to, we want to be involved. So, yeah, but I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any wrong, any rules or anything broken with Brooklyn churches or anything, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just communicate that with me and we'll see if we can't get any takers.
Right.
All right?
Okay.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you very much, Tony. Very positive report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. Thank you.
And following Tony is Dr. Brenda Kelly from Director of Developmental Education.
Hello.
And all others. Brenda Kelly presenting for, before you. Several of you as board members have an outline of the presentations I'm going to give. It's a one-page outline. And for those of you that are in the audience that do not have a copy, I will tell you, we're going to cover really four areas, starting with the Student Needs Assessment. It'll be a PowerPoint presentation, a brief discussion of our redefining developmental education here at the Kansas City, Kansas Community College, followed by a brief statement related to the status of our mandatory placement tests. And then we will close out by talking about what we're doing as relate to the strategic plan and the mandate developmental track sequence. So with that thought in mind, Student Needs Assessment for Fall 2013. At the beginning of this sheet that I put before you, which others do not, are not aware, this is the work of not just myself. It represents our, I'm nervous. Okay. I don't know why I am, but I am. But it represents the work of our Advisory Council, as well as our Center for Research, as well as myself. So it's a collaborative effort. So I don't want to assume any ownership just by myself. Our Student Needs Assessment, the purpose for creating this needs assessment was to identify the educational needs of the students that are enrolled in our developmental courses. In addition, we want to identify what are the factors that impact those students. And, and the third thing we want to be mindful of is how we could assist the students in accomplishing their educational and career goals. And we want to be able to do that in an expedient and cost-effective manner. So as it relates to the Student Needs Assessment, this is a brief summary of how we went about conducting the survey. It was emailed to each of our students that are assigned or enrolled in one or more developmental aid courses. And these, this is a listing of the courses that, that we sent the emails to in the fall. English ninety-nine, Word says H U D V one-on-one. We now refer to that as our first-year experience course. And then the math ninety-seven, ninety-nine, and one-on-four, Read ninety-one and Read ninety-two. And we offered the Student Needs Assessment both on the main campus as well as in Leavenworth site. Okay. With that thought in mind, there was a random visitor for myself to some of the classes to support the students as well as help the, help the students in taking the Student Needs Assessment. I'm going to speak more to that in later, but that's basically the overall. We did get the support of all of our deans that were involved in serving developmental education to encourage the completion of this survey. As you might note, the enrollment number at that time, unduplicated, was one thousand five hundred and twelve. And then the Student Needs Assessment was responded to by four hundred and twelve, four hundred and eleven students, which represents a twenty-seven percent response. The first question, or one of the questions that we asked was, have you attended another college? As you can see, seventy-four percent of the individuals responding had not, and twenty-six percent had. Then we asked them about their parents in terms of your mother or your father, if they have attended college. And there we learned that forty-seven percent said yes, forty-three percent said no, and eleven percent were not sure. They did not know if their parent has, parents had attended college. This particular slide reflects the reason for attending the Kansas City, Kansas Community College. The students could respond more than once. They could select more than one of the choices listed here. So you will note that seventy percent of the responses indicated that they came to acquire an associate degree. Then forty-five percent indicated that they wanted to take courses for transferring to another educational institution, probably higher level. And then we have twenty-two percent that said they wanted to increase their knowledge base. Sixteen felt, percent felt that if they would attend college, they would get a salary increase. There were some students that were here, twelve percent, that wanted to get a certificate. And eight percent indicated that they were here to get a job promotion. There were six percent that did not use any of those responses. And then there's just this one percent that's noted there, of students that was here to repeat a course that had been failed. Okay? The next area was what influenced your decision to come to the Kansas City, Kansas Community College? What influenced your attending? And the number one item selected was, or the greatest percentage selected was the location of our college, the cost, our financial and scholarships that are available by thirty-five percent. The course offerings indicated that twenty-eight percent felt that the course offerings were of variety enough that they were interested in attending. They found some convenience in the times that we offered our classes, twenty-eight percent. The class size represented twenty-eight percent. Students felt that our class sizes was a reason to come and attend. As you know, twenty-three percent were influenced by family and friends. And twelve percent had learned of our academic support services, such as our tutoring, so they were here for that service. And because we have an open admissions, twelve percent, and our athletes are coming, because nine percent of them are coming because they're involved in some form of athletics here. And then there were four percent that did not give us a response. The next slide reflects the challenges. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Let me go back.
Were there definitions or explanations given to the students? Well, for an example, on academic support, then it says tutoring, but there's other forms of support, even the very classes that they're taking, right? And developmental education should be considered a support for furthering their success. And yet only twelve percent of them, so I'm wondering if there was, or am I reading too much into what you would have meant by that selection?
Okay. I think a factor that might influence that twelve percent response is that this was offered at the, this assessment was offered at the beginning of the course, of the school year, meaning in the fall at the very beginning. And those students remember, about seventy-four percent of them were first time, never attended an institution at all. They were not familiar with our institution. They were just enrolling in perhaps our first-year college experience course, but not mindful of what resources are available. But as soon as a student is on campus, our Center for Academic Resources, our A R C, Academic Resource Center, does submit and send to each of them by way of email, a listing of the services that are available, and the times, and the location. And this semester, I might add, in addition to that being emailed to them, because I've been going to the classrooms, I've been taking that information to them, to give it to them and to show them where our A R C center is. So the point I'm trying to make here is that, at the time that we did this survey, it's very likely that many of them did not know about where those resources are. But they were told by others, be it other family and friends, but they did not know when they first came on board. But I think if we were to do that, like, at the end of the semester, that percentage would be far different. Okay? Any other questions? All righty. All right. I was getting ready to go into some of the challenges. The students indicated, these are challenges that we thought that might impede their success at our institution. And so we had a listing, and we just had one-word listing, like, we had money, just the way they're listed is how we had them listed. And fifty-two percent of the students indicated that money, or the lack thereof, was a concern. It presented a challenge for them. Their need to work and their work hours, they were concerned that they were working more hours than they, they needed to work the hours, but it did impact their performance in their coursework, or they were concerned that it would. That's thirty-nine percent felt that way. The motivation, several of the students, twenty-nine percent indicated that there is a concern about their motivation, being motivated to start, complete, do the work. And then twenty-seven percent indicated that transportation is a concern. Childcare, twenty percent indicated that they had childcare needs. And seventeen percent of the respondents said that none of the above issues, be it the health, or the housing, or the food addiction, as well as abuse, none of that, along with those listed above, influenced or they perceived to be a challenge. But you can see there are students that do have concerns, fifteen percent, fifteen percent for housing, thirteen percent for food, and then the addiction, addition, addi- addiction, I can't get that word out, addiction, and abuse. You know, that's a self-reporting. And so that response is probably because they chose not to report. A few people did, but it's a self-reporting. And you may not want to acknowledge that you have issues there. Okay? All righty. Now, the next item we have is how comfortable are you with using the computer? And we ask this of our students, and if you really look at this chart close, this table closely, this pie chart closely, you'll realize that really only two percent are not comfortable. If you would look at it overall, ninety-eight percent are. Just that fifty-nine percent are very comfortable, twenty-eight percent are comfortable, and eleven percent are somewhat. But overall, ninety-eight percent are comfortable with the computer. When we asked them, do you have a computer in your home? Eighty-nine percent said yes, and eleven percent said no. Be mindful, I'm going to just make, call it out like it is, there are possibly the students that didn't respond to, because it was emailed to them, did not have a computer, or did not have access to it. So it'd be mindful that those responding, a greater percentage of them had computers. Now, how comfortable are you with using your computer? This is Dr. Grunkie helped us with this. She did this, really helping us to see, dividing it up in terms of if you have a computer in your home, or if you do not have a computer in your home, how comfortable are you? And it's apparent from this table, that sixty-two percent of the students that have a computer in their home are far more comfortable with the utilization of the computer. So the point is, if you have one in your home and you use it more frequently, obviously, you're going to be more comfortable with it. Comparably to, you can see only thirty-six percent of those individuals that do not have it in their home are not comfortable with the use. Our next statement is, do you have easy access to the internet? And here again, you can note, it's just almost proportionate to if they have a computer in their home. Eighty-nine percent says yes, and eleven percent says no. Now, this is really reflecting to, out of their home, because on this campus, if anywhere you're on this campus, you have one-hundred percent access to the internet, if you come to any of our A R C or facilities. So this is reflecting out of their homes, I guess. All right. Now we try to break down a little bit more about those educational needs. What do you think you might need to accomplish your goal? And forty percent of them indicated, I'm going to need tutoring. Thirty-seven percent says, I'm going to need help with time management. Thirty percent says, I'm going to need help with study skills, and then test-taking, twenty-nine percent. Some students said, I'm going to need help with concentration, concentrating on what I'm supposed to do, being focused, is twenty-seven percent. Here again, twenty-three percent said, none of the above, I don't need the help. I don't perceive I'm going to have a problem. Then there's the small group discussion groups. That's something that they said they would, wanted for help. And then help with note-taking, with reading, and then the help with the computer skills. All of this information has been discussed and shared with our Advisory Council, our Academic Resource Center. We're mindful of this, and so we are really reaching out to help them meet these needs in terms of what they've expressed they need help in.
Brenda, could they enter multiple, could they check multiple responses?
Yes, they could. And that does reflect a multiple response. All that applied. Sorry, I didn't say that. We're down near the end here. Have you set a date for completing your educational goal? As you all probably know, Stephen Covey tells us to plan with the end in mind. We're trying to get our students to think with that notion as well. Planning with the end in mind. What are your goals? What it is that you want to accomplish? And it appears that currently, according to this survey, fifty-five percent have not done that. And forty-five percent has said, yes, I kind of have a date of completion, when I want it to be done with the activities here at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. Do you know where to go for academic advising? Ninety percent of the students says, yes, I know where to go. And ten percent says, no. Do you know where to go at KCK if you need tutoring? Eighty-three percent says, yes, I know where to go. And seventeen percent says, no, I don't know where to go. Then we asked them, well, do you know how to use Web Advisor? And this is really important to us. And ninety-five percent of the students says, yes, I know how to use it. And four percent says, no, I don't know how to use it. And then one percent said, oh, what is that, Web Advisor? They don't know what it is. Okay. Now, I'll make a little statement about this one because this is how we communicate with the student, one of the primary ways as relates to their enrollment, their financial aid, their awards letter. It goes on. There's many things. So this is crucial, that the student really knows how to utilize his service and be in communication with, with the college. Do you, I think this will be our, probably our last slide. Do you know how to use the Help Desk? And it appears that sixty-eight percent of them say, yes, they do. Twenty-five percent says, no. And seven percent doesn't know what the Help Desk is. Now, this question is important because our math is, the math the students are taking in the developmental aid component is primarily computer-driven. And if they are having any issues with their computer or with getting online, they should be able to call the Help Desk and get help from home. And so that's why it's important for them to know that that's a resource available to them in the absence of being in the classroom. Oh, okay. The next question we ask is, have you used the academic advising services of Kansas City, Kansas Community College? And sixty-eight percent says, yes, we've used the service. And thirty-two percent says, no. This is, again, breaking the data down a little bit further. Have you, it appears that, let me see now. Okay, this is looking at, have not used the advising services. It appears that the blue says that they have not set a goal to completion date. So when they use advising services, it appears that students are more inclined to set a goal for a completion date. When they don't use the services, they don't necessarily set a goal for completion date as well, as readily. Okay.
I've got one question.
Yes, ma'am. Want me to go back to that one?
Most of the students, first-time students, have never been to college before at all.
Seventy-four percent. Seventy-four percent of the students that responded.
Okay, so that's true. Most of them were freshmen, and they're, they hadn't visited or came ahead of time. You know, because we got to work better, I know, at getting students on this campus to see what it is like. And I, and it bothers me at times when the freshmen, I know they don't know what they want to take. And they change their major three or four times, and I know what that figure's at. But it bothers me that they don't know in the beginning, that they don't even have a goal set. That's because they don't know what they want to do.
They don't what, because what?
They don't know what they want to take. They're just taking the basic classes. So how do we get to the first-time students so that they will look at anybody's college?
Well, that is such a segue into where I'm going next. Thank you so much. Because one slide next, and then I'm going to answer your question. So it is not, it is a good segue into where we want to go and tell you what we as an institution are doing about just that, that you've mentioned. And that takes us into our advising services, the advising center. And we're trying to get the students to tell us, how helpful is it? But I'm going to get the, please, your question is not forget, forgotten, because it's the second item on the agenda. Okay? We are seeing that they find the advising services of KCK to be extremely helpful. In fact, ninety-seven percent of the students that have used the services felt that it was helpful, and only three percent said that it was not. Whether it was very helpful, thirty-six percent, or helpful, forty-six percent, or somewhat helpful, sixteen percent. You put all that together, that's still ninety-seven percent of the students felt that it was helpful. Okay? So with that in mind, that's the end of the presentation as it relates to the needs assessment. But if you will see from your agenda I have put before you, the next item I want to talk about addresses the question of, I'm going to have to skip to get there. Well, we discovered, the next item is the, we redefine developmental education, because here's what we discovered. We discovered that students were coming to our institution, and if they're first time and they haven't attended any other institution, it is mandatory that they take our placement test. And the results of the placement test determines what courses they'll be taking. And what we were discovering is that we would have students, X number of students taking the placement test, but less students enrolling in the courses. Okay, so we are really trying to look at that a little bit closer to see now, can we, in fact, impose a situation where the student does take the placement test, and those results be given to our advisement center, our advising center? And that the student has to be seen by an advisor to be enrolled into their courses? We're at the beginning stages of looking at the logistics of that, moving toward what we call mandatory advisement. And because we know that the students are aware of our advisement services, and they do utilize them, we're trying to guide them in the usage of it, so that we do not have students that are taking the placement tests and not taking the courses that they need as a result of the placement test. The placement test tells us whether, are you college-ready, are you not college-ready? And based upon your scores, it just implied you're not college-ready sometimes. And if that is the case, we have courses we want to have you to take to help you become college-ready. Some students circumvent that and just enroll into other courses, whatever they choose. And we're trying to, and then they're not successful, not all, but many are not successful. And so they withdraw, and it's a waste of time for them and a waste of money. So we're trying to really get a tighter range on that. And this is where we're trying to do the mandatory advisement, and that we can advise the students into the courses that they need to take based upon their, their placement test.
So that gives an awful lot of weight to one assessment, to the-
To the placement test or the acupressure.
To the placement test. So I'd like to hear a little more thought of, on this one measure, being the lone criteria versing, you know, there's a lot of variables that come into play, especially when you look at our, you know, the average age of our student, they're adults. You know, a lot of times we, we speak of the, what I would term, young adult, teenage, versing, you know, thirty years of age. So I'm, I just wondered your thinking.
Could I give a little to add to that? Because your concern is a legitimate one. We do offer the students three opportunities to take the placement test. We try to encourage them to enroll as early as November, if you plan to go the following fall. So if you start your enrollment process early and you take the placement test, you have some opportunities to improve that score, if in fact you can improve it. There is also, through Compass, ACT provides, help tests, that you can go online to do a lot of sample tests and mastery, to master certain components of the test. When you take the placement test here at our institution, if you pass a portion of it, you do not have to retake that portion again. And that may get you out of taking the English course, depends on which, which portion you're not proficient in. So if we are able to get more students applying earlier for our institution and taking the placement test earlier, like I said, as early as November or something of that nature of the year prior to actually planning on attending, if we're able to do that, get them to take it early. That's the point, that they can take it three times before they actually enroll.
I think what Dr. Rios is really getting at is there, rather than putting so much weight on just a single instrument, whether it's Acupressure, Compass, or some other placement instrument, are there other factors that we could take into consideration when determining whether or not a student should be in a developmental track or not? Is that more, I think that's more what he's getting at, rather than-
I am sure there are. I'm sure there are, but this is what we're currently doing. But that doesn't mean that's- But that doesn't mean that's what we have to continue to do.
Does the age play a lot in it though? I mean, if I've been out of school five or ten years, twenty years, and I take the placement test, I'm not going to score as well as somebody that just got out of that senior class, even if it was a low senior class, they still should be able to outdo me. Or does that happen? Because since we've got older students that have been away from school a little while, doing, that time lag in there going to mess up?
I think we can revisit it, but currently that's how it is. And I'm not saying that's the way it has to be. We're, I'm just responding to board mandate. This is a mandated test by our governing board. So if we want to do something different and other than, we can definitely explore what are some additional variables we can put into there. Be, you know, be it GPA, even though grades predict grades. I mean, there are other things that we could put into it, but this is a board mandated test that you all are saying to attend this institution, you need to take an entrance exam.
How come I said that I brought a student up here, and so I decided to take the test while he was taking it? Oh, he was horrible. Not that English, I had forgotten everything I learned.
College?
Well, it's not so much about whether to take it, have an exam. That's, my concern is just a single measure and totality of the individual and other, I just think, you know.
We should look at other variables.
Look at other variables to see. Because none of it, just because you pass the Accuplacer is not a hundred percent guarantee, or the Compass, a hundred percent guaranteed that you're going to be a successful college student. I mean, there's, that's not a guarantee.
That's very true.
Even a higher ACT score. He usually ends up going into work ethic, the focus, and some of the reasons why there have come tend to be the intrinsic drivers that end up getting the, you know, the successful result. And so I'm just, my wondering is if we are contemplating, looking at the other things such as with the younger students, you know, GPA, MAP scores, which is one of the more trusted scores within K-12. Not, I understand, but, so, you know, and then that, and then that, that for most students comes from K through 12 literally. So you don't just have, you know, an assessment here and there, but you have an actual tracking to see, or not, trend, to see what the student has done over a period of time, to make a prediction then, what would they be likely to do continuing on. So it's just, just something to think about, I think, as you're continuing your work.
There's one more variable I forgot to mention. I'm sorry, there is one more variable I did forget to mention, is that those students that take the ACT and have twenty-three, a score of twenty-three and higher, are exempt from taking our placement tests. So they are automatically allowed to go into the regular coursework. So there is that exemption. And those students that have, I think it's over thirty credit hours, thirty credit hours are allowed, if they've already completed thirty credit hours at another institution, they are not required to do the mandatory test. Still, we're mindful of your concern, and it is something for us to look closer at. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I think the whole survey obviously does that, gives you and your staff and others here, you know, some things to look at, and I think maybe we've given you some, you know, some ideas as well, so, good. Right. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
All right, thank you. Just a few more things before I ask you to approve my report. I just thought I'd give you a little bit of a, more of an explanation on some of the things that I was doing this last year. When Dr. Kramer and I met with Cerner, it was to really kind of pick their brains about what, if anything, we could do to maybe make our associate graduates more employable as associates. And quite honestly, they were pretty adamant that they're looking for the bachelor's degree. There were some programs that they do have where current college students and even high school students can get into internship programs and work through there. But they even said that even with their bachelor's degree hires, they put them in a twenty-four-week training program that usually all of their employees go through before they really turn them loose on the Cerner way, so. But it was, it was a good discussion, and I think we've got some directions that we can go with our program as a result of it.
Good.
The AOK, that's the accelerated opportunity funding that the state is part of that allows us to work in the course rooms of the technical programs to help students who are, either don't have their GED or need some basic remediation to get through the skills that they need to either earn their GED or to reach the skill level they need to be able to complete their certificate programs and move on. The Tech Education Authority, that's the group that oversees all the technical education in the state. And basically, they're there to, they approve new tech programs going on, being proposed to the K-Bore for the state. At that particular meeting, we also took a look at the governor's 2015 budget recommendations and looked at the tiered education, state aid distribution that's been, already been approved for 2015, and we hope it stays intact as we go through the legislative session. With Metropolitan Community College, the environmental health and safety is a degree that they offer. And what we're looking at is offering that degree to our students who would actually take courses with us, the gen ed courses, if you will, and then take the program-specific courses at Metropolitan Community College. Those are offered as hybrid courses, and they require the students to attend on campus at Metropolitan, one core, one night a week or one day a week for each course that they would take. So it's not a lot of driving, but it would give an opportunity for our students. The Healthy Wind Dot, the Healthy Community Wind Dot Steering Committee, Dr. Daniel sits on that. And a lot of times I'm not able to go because they always conflict with the meeting that we have standing with Dr. Givens. But I try to go and get there as quickly as I can. And I think the biggest thing at this meeting was to find a real direction for the steering committee and some projects that we could get a hold of and really work on, seeing to completion within the next three years for that group. And then, of course, the PTK Recognition Luncheon, which you got to see the two students, Gabrielle and Ryan. And they really reflect the students that we have at KCKCC. Ryan is your non-traditional student, been out in the workforce, in the construction, doing the manual labor, and, you know, he saw that that wasn't where he wanted to spend the next twenty or thirty years. And so he's, you know, working on a civil engineering, that's his goal. And, you know, he's gotten, he's seen the need for that from his work in construction. Gabriella is more the traditional graduate from high school and come to college student, but she's one of those students who, you know, and I don't know why, you know, if there was money, just not ready to live home yet, what her reasons were, or just the great education she could get here at KCKCC. But, you know, she's still living at home, she's finishing her two-year degree, she'll be moving on to Washburn in the fall. And, you know, she's saved a lot of money for her and her family by doing that, so I think that's commendable. So if there are no other questions, I ask for your approval of my report. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Trustee Maddox. The Career Center is doing a series of workshops in Bonner Springs. How are those set up? Do we pursue those, or do they ask us to do them?
I'm not sure. John, do you know if those, Career Center, if we set those up or if they ask for them?
Maybe just go into their center and sign up.
But the ones that we're doing, like at the high school, Bonner Springs, they're done both ways. They're, I guess they're set up both by, at the school's request and our staff going in.
I was just wondering, are we doing any of those in the urban core?
I'm not aware of any, and I'll have to find out. Pardon?
I'll make sure that there's a list provided.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mary Ann?
When you were speaking with Cerner, did they also tell you they still wanted a 3.5 for the GPA for the bachelor's degree?
No, they didn't get that specific.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just was wondering, under the financial aid appeals, it said a hundred forty-five were approved on condition. I just wondered what the condition?
You know, the conditional approval of a financial aid appeal?
Yeah, that's what it says. It says appeals approved with conditions.
They may have been limited to the number of credit I was going to take. They may be limited to cash, or a loan. They may have been limited to specific courses.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
One other question. Yes. What are online enrollment numbers?
You mean the total number of students enrolled online? I don't have that number off the top of my head. Song key, is that a number you have stored away?
A lot of twenty-five. Thirty dollars.
Okay, about, yeah.
Okay.
But anything happens soon.
The last report I received on January twenty-third, it was two thousand four hundred.
And so for perspective, has that number been coming up? Is it trending? Which way is it trending?
Down.
And then the twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and twelve is two thousand six three, and thirteen is two thousand six seventy-eight, and fourteen is two thousand four.
Okay.
So we should keep the doors open.
That's probably, you know, looking at how our whole enrollment's been trending down.
Yeah. Okay. Can we move acceptance of the report?
All right, we'll have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Vitale. And now it's time for Vice President Bodie.
Thank you. We might as well start with the resolution for the bonds. The bonds were, according to the resolution passed at the last board meeting, the bonds were marketed this week, Monday, excuse me, last week, Monday. We had a weekend in between. Tuesday, they were sold. The market was strong for bonds. We, a hundred eighty-three thousand dollar savings overall over the fifteen-year period. Interest rate was down. It was within the parameters that you approved at the last board meeting. Today, I'm asking you to approve our entry into what's called Supplemental Lease Purchase Agreement Number Two. You remember supplement. We had the original bond issue, and we had a supplemental bond issue. And then this is supplement, that was supplement one, and this is supplement two. It has been reviewed by numerous legal teams. It's in approval, and I have Mr. Wynn's marked-up copy of this long thing that he says I have to read again.
All right. Get your water? Okay.
If I may. A resolution authorizing Kansas City, Kansas Community College, Wyandotte County, Kansas to enter into a supplemental lease purchase agreement number two, the proceeds of which will be used to pay the cost of acquiring, construction, or installing certain educational building improvements on the college campus in Kansas City, Kansas, and to approve the execution of certain documents in connection therewith. Therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of Kansas City, Kansas Community College, Wyandotte County, Kansas as follows. Section one, authorization and approval of college documents and declaration of trust. College documents in the supplemental declaration of trust two are hereby approved in substantially the form submitted to and reviewed by the governing body on a date to hereof, with such changes therein as shall be approved by the chairperson, the chairperson's execution of the college documents to be conclusive evidence of such approval. The issuance of the Series 2014 Certificates of Participation pursuant to the Declaration of Trust and as described in the preliminary official statement is hereby authorized and approved. The obligation of the college to pay basic rent payments as defined in the lease under the lease shall constitute a current expense of the college and shall not in any way be construed to be indebtedness or liability of the college in contravention of any applicable constitutional or statutory limitation or requirement concerning the creation of indebtedness or liability by the college. And all provisions of the lease shall be construed so as to give effect to that, to such intent. The college covenants that pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash thirty-seven one twenty-five, its obligation to make all rental payments is not subject to Kansas cash basis law, and therefore the college is required to make such rental payments from whatever source of revenue as is legally available, including a levy of ad valorem taxes without limit if necessary. The chairperson or vice-chairperson, if the chairperson is unavailable, is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver the college documents and to approve changes to the supplemental declaration of trust two on behalf of and as an act and deed of the college. The secretary or acting secretary, if the secretary is unavailable, is hereby authorized to affix the college's seal to the college documents and attest such seal. Said seal. Section two, approval of preliminary and official document statements. The preliminary official statement is hereby ratified and approved for the purpose of an enabling the underwriter to comply with the requirements of Rule Fifteen C two dash twelve B one of the Securities and Exchange Commission. The college hereby deems the information regarding the college contained in the preliminary official statement to be final as of its date, except for the omission of such information as is requested by Rule Fifteen C two dash twelve B one. And the appropriate officers of the college are hereby authorized, if requested, to provide the underwriter a letter or certificate of such effect and to take such other actions or execute such other documents as such officers in their reasonable judgment deem necessary to enable the underwriter to comply with the requirements of such rule. The final official statement is hereby authorized and approved, supplementing and amending and completing the preliminary official statement with such changes therein and additions thereto as shall be approved by the officer of the college executing the final official statement. Said officer's execution thereof to be conclusive evidence of said officer's approval thereof and the public distribution of the final official statement by the purchaser of refunding certificates of participation are in all respects hereby authorized and approved. Chairman of the college is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the final official statement on behalf of and as an act and deed of the college. Section three, further authority. The college shall and the officials and agents of the college are hereby authorized and directed to take such actions, expend such funds, and execute such other documents, certificates, and instruments as may be necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent of this resolution and to carry out, comply with, and perform the duties of the college with respect to the college documents, the other documents authorized or approved hereby, and the twenty-fourteenth additional, twenty-fourteen additional improvements and underlying real property as part of the project. Without limiting the foregoing, the chairperson is hereby authorized, if required, to execute any certificate agreement to allow the underwriter to comply with Rule Fifteen C two twelve of the Security Exchange Commission. Section four, mandatory provision. The mandatory contract provision prescribed by the Kansas Department of Administration in Form BA one forty-six A as amended shall not apply to the college documents, except that the provisions of KSA seventy-one dash two oh one A and KSA seventy-one dash two oh one B shall apply to the college documents. Effective date, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after its passage by the governing body, adopted by the governing body of Kansas City, Kansas Community College, Wyandotte County, Kansas, this eighteenth day of February, 2014.
Move approval of resolution number fourteen.
Roger. Right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any question or comment? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Very much.
Thank you, Brian.
My report begins on page twenty-nine of your, of the document, and goes through page thirty-three. I think the business office's report highlights the busy time January is. Ten ninety-eight Ts, ten ninety-nines, and W twos all poured out of that business office last month. A busy, busy month for the staff. Last year's ten ninety-eight Ts, we had, I guess it must have been about June or July, the IRS decided to go after all the community colleges. And for ten ninety-eight Ts, which are tuition and scholarship paid. paid forms that we provide to every student, students that didn't have, that didn't have correct social security numbers. And between the business office and Dr. McDowell's office, we put a concerted effort into that. Since then, we hope we have, all of the community colleges went together and wrote the same letter asking for relief from the fine that they were going to give us, however, we think we did a much better job this semester, and I thank to, to Dr. McDowell's admission people as we battled to try to get students to have proper identification. But it was a busy, it's a busy month, with W2s, 1098s, and then 1099s.
Vice President Bodie, I was wondering if it might be good to have the new bookstore manager just kind of give us a progress of what he is, because he talked in there about steamlining the process for paying for books and financial aid, so I'm sure that he's, you know, refining different things, and if we could have an update from him as part of your report, maybe next time, or at a time that you, that you can talk and just let us know, but I, I think that would be good information. The bookstore is such a, you know, a lifeblood of our revenues, I'd like to just hear.
And it comes down, the real issue there is most of the systems that the bookstore can get to in their own system don't interface well with the financial aid system, and especially when, when the financial aid system has a budget in it, and it may say you have, let's say a thousand dollars of excess financial aid, but you only have five classes or three classes, whichever it is, and so the financial aid people have worked budgets for all of these students, and it'll come up and say, okay, out of that thousand, you maybe should spend $400 on books. Well, all of the systems we have just reach in and grab and say a thousand, and all the sales lady in the bookstore try to sell them a computer, three sweatshirts, two backpacks, and get their thousand dollars spent at our place. That defeats the purpose of what the financial aid people work so hard to do, and so that is part of what that issue is, is getting those systems where we don't just see, Bodie, you have a thousand dollars that you can spend, what we also see is the budget that has been put together that says, yeah, we'll only spend 400 on your books and maybe spend 600 on rent, or, or something like that, and there's that, that's, that's what the real issue is, and Mark and the financial aid team are trying to, without compromising people's personal information, that's a tough, it's a really tough nut to crack.
I see.
And I'll give you a report as we get a little closer and try to do, because they're truly conflicting, they're truly conflicting approaches. Business, the bookstore will sell you everything they can sell you, you got a thousand dollar in financial aid credit, we'll take a thousand and one of it. The ladies in financial aid, you have a thousand dollars in financial aid credit, they know you should only spend a few hundred in books and you need to use the rest of that, and there's that conflict, and the two systems that they all use conflict, and we're trying to figure out how to smooth that, that edge.
That makes sense. My other question came from housing, I saw that there was 115 of the 148 available units filled, that's kind of down from where we were talking about having waiting lists for people, so I was wondering what that.
I think Coach Thompson's speech about how many people are being tested, and the increased emphasis that we have put on, because obviously last year there was what was considered to be too many events in that housing, and the increased emphasis that is put on, we had a lot of people that just said they wouldn't come back because we enforced the rules.
Good.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you.
Any other?
Any other questions for Vice President Bodie and his report?
As part of Vice President Bodie's report, the trustees did read the letters in regard to potential internships under the vice president, and is that what the board was looking for? Remember, we, we talked, and I just wanted to make sure, it was satisfied committee, but I didn't know.
It talks about the internships, but it did talk about the courses that they, they had discussed early on.
Those courses are still being worked with, you know, building a course is easy to talk about, building a course that's accepted by faculty and the Kansas Board of Regents is a different, a different trail, and I know Ed Kramer had been working with Chevron on that and trying to, to get through that, but that's going to be a lot
Work in progress.
Longer, um, process than, than the availability of internship.
That's fine, as long as it's still on the table, I just wanted to make sure.
I see Dean Kramer, that would be the case.
Right, yeah, there's, I mean, they haven't met much more, the, um, mission B's and Chevron except that, I've talked to them a couple times before, about getting some information as they go through, we're looking at the drawing, we have a, helping design that into classes we have in the business, and then possibly give out some other courses for our engineering, for our engineering schools as we go forward, that's about, and then because, like, in our, like, some of these, real examples.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Move approval of the Vice President's report?
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve Vice President Bodie's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Was that the gap one?
The toppling notebooks, there, I think. Okay.
Under 11A Finance, on your payment of the bill, it begins on page 37, goes through 89, ask your approval of payments of the bill.
Move approval of payment of the bills?
Second. All right, any other questions, comments?
Just only, the three million is, is a typical amount of monthly bills, so we were right in line with the trend.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
And under 11B, the financial reports begin on page 90 and go through page 93.
After review of the cumulative budget at 51% is a, is a good place to be, we did note instruction and facility support, but again, they're a little over, percentage-wise, but given what we've been working on, those, those did not appear to be out of line, in our view. Just want you to know that they were reviewed.
Second. Okay, is there a motion?
There's a second.
Move, move approval.
All right, JD's moving approval now, Clyde?
Now you second it.
Now you second it, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
And then, way back to page four and five of your, of your book, I asked for your approval of finance items, C 1 through 6, 6 being on the amended agenda.
6 being on the amended agenda.
I move approval, but I would like Vice President Bodie to give explanation to our gym floor bid.
Yeah, hold on a second, I have to hold it up.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and now, Brian, if you could answer.
In number three, I should have also explained the same thing as number four. Pro Foundation Incorporated, besides just being a hundred and seventy dollars higher, and they're the ones that are going to do the other bid, they use a dry foam, it's almost styrofoam, that they spray into the voids under our floor to lift the floor. The other bids we got are what they call wet grout, and they're just, it's like pumping sludge concrete under them to pump them up, and with some of our voids that we don't know how deep they go and how far they go, the bid that we got from them said it'll be this much unless it starts pumping away and going away. The other issue really specific on the basketball floor is, and we have our architect team in looking right now, we have another bubble on the basketball court, almost the same place we had it last year, where the floor is just rising up in one spot, and we got the test teams in again, and we have like 70% humidity there, and we have like 28% humidity on the rest of the basketball floor, and so we had to bring in a company and we moved a hole in the floor and we're blowing air underneath it to dry out that one spot. We can't figure out, out in the middle of the, of the fieldhouse floor, why that one little area is real humid. We have all the drawings from when this building was built, well, we have the ones that it was designed, not how it was built, but it is right along one of the seams of where the two, the flat, the part of the fieldhouse that's on one level meets the part of the fieldhouse that's on multiple levels, and there's a duct in there that we can see in one of the old drawings. We have our architect company in looking to see if they can find if that duct actually exists. If it does, where it's pulling air, it does look like it may go to one of the locker rooms, so it may be pulling warm, moist air out, why it would run over and always end up in the same spot on the basketball court, but the reason the basketball floor is rising is because the humidity in that spot's so high and the wood's wet, so we're drying it, and then we got somebody looking for it, but we don't want to put any more moisture underneath that basketball floor if we can help it, and Spartan Foundation Repair is wet grout, and so please, we ask that you approve the foam, the styrofoam.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You sure any springs is not up under there?
Ma'am, it's only humidity, it's not water.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I told you so, I'll just come back and see.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Good. Okay, we are ready for item agenda number 12, is that right? And at this point?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For item 12. I have the, the personnel agenda for this month, and I'd like to, section A is for, present for your information is for resignation for several employees, and then in section B, we're asking your approval, there's 13 applicants that we'd like to hire, and one employee termination, we're asking for your approval.
Move approval of the report?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right.
Thank you.
Continuing ed in community service, is there some report or action necessary there?
Oh, just approval.
Okay. All right, we're at item 13, report of committees, which committee would like to?
Excuse me, I need to request approval for number 15, continuing education and community service, the contractor, contract instructor payments?
Okay, that's what I was just asking.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was just asking, yeah, okay, because I thought, I thought we went through 14. Okay, all right, so, Michael?
15's on that page.
Well, 15's 15.
That's all under human resources.
Okay, the three people under, under number 15 is Don Glasgow, BLS for healthcare providers, a CPR class, start, end date is 1/25/14, a $210 contract payment. Mary Mayer, consultant fee, primetime club, January 2014, start date 1/6, ended 1/30/14 in the amount of $420, and Sue Marler, introduction to personal computers, 1/24/14, $30 contract payment.
So, so moved.
What is, okay.
Go ahead.
What's primetime club?
I have no idea.
That's the 50-plus program, community program.
50 over, do they get to go free?
I think it's $5.
$5?
About there.
50 over, okay.
And under 80.
Under 80.
Under 80? No, she said 50 and over. 50 on up.
Okay, so to clarify, the motion was to approve the report.
Yeah.
So did we cover 15 or not?
We covered.
That's part of his report.
Yeah, that's part of the.
Counselor?
Motion second, vote.
I moved, I moved approval.
And I seconded it, so.
And we did the whole report, including 15, so, all right, we're good. Okay, committee reports. Who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
Um, I talked to Senator Moran this morning, and on
Who?
Senator Moran.
Oh, Senator Moran, okay.
The 27th of February is when the Carl Perkins, Carl Perkins, whatever they're going to do with the Carl Perkins.
Grant funding.
Yeah, is going to come up, he said he would keep me in touch, because I had worried to death about it before I fell. Okay, and I'll give my best report when I get well.
Okay, I think Mary Ann's really trying to talk about our, our legislative summit trip with ACCT and ACC that trustees Flunder, Maddox, and I attended last week in Washington, DC, and so that was a part of our discussion with Senator Moran. We also saw Congressman Yoder, and we met with staffers from Congresswoman Jenkins' office, and also Senator Roberts' office, and so it was, the, the meetings I think were very productive, the Kansas Association of Community College trustees and all the 19 community colleges helped sponsor and host legislative reception, we had good attendance from all of the legislators' offices, however, Senator Moran was the only actual legislator that was able to attend the reception that night, and we had a lot of really good one-on-one time with him at that reception. Outside of an unscheduled trip to the hospital that we made on Monday following Ms. Flunders' blunder on the steps at the Russell State Office Building, and I do have photo for anybody who wants to see that, and you see she's sporting a nice beautiful purple cast on her left arm there where she, she broke her wrist, but that was our only setback early on, and then later, I think trustee Maddox got stuck due to the snowstorm, and I'm not sure when he made it home, did he?
Sunday.
Sunday, yes, so Mary Ann and I were able to make it out Wednesday afternoon before the storm, actually it snowed while we were taxiing out to take off, it started, and we made it back in order for me to attend the PTK and the KACC team meeting in, in Topeka Thursday. So, the trip was productive, Wynn got a little extra R and R downtime, much to his chagrin, spent a couple of extra days there, but the, the meetings were productive, we, we believe, and we, we have good legislative support, you know, in Washington, DC, I think, they are, they are on the same page as we are, they understand the issues regarding the particular, particular, you know, grant funding programs, Perkins, Pell, WEA, Workforce Investment Act, and, and all of those things, so I think it was time well spent, and So, I think it was time well spent, and it was productive.
I think the.
Would you like to add, Wendell?
Yeah, we had about, on the, we had a national agenda that we, we used to meet with all the legislators and the aides, and, and among them was WEA Reauthorization Workforce Investment Act. And, you know, that, that has been pending legislation for about, what, 10 or 12 years now? We've been trying to get the WEA reauthorized, as well as some of the funding restored, and we had some conversations about that. And it looks like for the first time, and I think Dr. Hunt and I have been, been on the Hill two or three times talking about this reauthorization, but it looks like it's finally going to happen this year. It seems like there's a lot of movement on it, and apparently, there are some Republicans who are retiring that want to see it get it, see, see it get done, and then there's also some, some Democrats that want to get it done in both House and Senate, so that, that was the best news we had when we were there.
Okay, are there other committee reports?
I think the only, the only thing I would, just so you all know, things are moving along with the gala. The fundraiser for the endowment and, and the college is moving forward. They've broken up into committees, and those committees have started to meet. I'm on the auction committee. Unfortunately, the weather kind of, you know, shifted some of those, so we're actually meeting for the first time next Monday. So, don't have a lot to report. Ray, Ray may have, have something in addition from his committee, but just to let you know, things are moving forward through now the subcommittee structures.
Good. Anything to add, Dr. Daniels?
Committee is meeting Thursday afternoon for the first time.
Good. All right, agenda item 14, any unfinished business? Take this to the all-important agenda item 15.
Move WEA, John.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You can stay as long as you want if you're opposed, but to the rest of you, good evening, and thank you for being here.